Good morning, Happy New Year and welcome to Exploring Economic Development with MEDC. I'm Meredith Harris. And we have Jill Roberts. Good morning Jill, how are you?
Good morning, I'm excited to be here.
It's a new year.
New year.
We're kicking off episode 41 of Exploring Economic Development.
Yep.
Yeah.
I mean, it was this time, three years ago when we started this.
When we started this.
Yes. I remember I, there was a whole lot about economic development that I did not yet fully understand.
But you do now.
But through the power of the podcast. No, but it's been really, it's, this is us, this is kind of a passion project of ours. We really enjoy inviting different guests to come on and share their expertise.
Right.
Yeah.
And we've had an exciting week in the city. We had an inauguration, we have a new mayor in the city, we have a lot of stuff going on. And so today, we're gonna welcome our newly-elected city council president, or should I say, "oldly-elected, newly-elected," he's back. So we're really excited for episode 41 to have President, City Council President Mike Ossing with us today.
Yeah.
Thank you for joining us. We did want to mention episode 40, if you missed episode 40, we had Mayor Vigent on with Trish Bernard to kind of recap the 12 years and all the economic development success. That was a really fun episode, so if you missed that, make sure to catch the replay. Yeah, but now we're gonna look forward into 2024.
Absolutely.
And talk about what's to come on the city council.
Yeah.
So thanks for being here with us today.
Again, thanks Meredith, thanks Jill, glad to be here.
Yeah. So you've been on before, we've had your repeat guest here on the podcast, but we want to hear a little bit about what is the council, I know we probably talked about it last time, but again, for folks that may not have been watching, what is the job of the council? What do you guys do? We had a whole big inauguration this year, Mayor Dumas was sworn in, you guys are all coming up, doing your oath and saying what you're gonna do, but what, what does that mean for the folks that might not understand exactly what that entails?
Right, so the council basically has three functions. We enact laws, we appropriate funds, and we grant special permits. So from the enacting laws, that's zoning changes, salaries, fees, marijuana stores, gasoline station hours of operation, basically any of the laws that we have on the books of Marlboro. From appropriations, it's approving the budget.
Money.
Money.
Money, 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 money.
Transfers, bonds, capital projects, we ultimately approve the Board of Assessors' recommendations for taxes, or we change it. And then special permits, those are the ones where someone, it could be a resident or developer comes before the city and wants a special, they want something special, they want to change the laws to do something that requires a granting of a special permit, and the city council.
Is the granting authority.
There's a granting authority on that. Two other ones that I, I'd like to make sure the councils, I always remind them of, we have the approval authority for all the mayor appointees, so for all the boards and commissions, the mayor, the mayor appoints, the council approves. And then, we really provide the necessary balance for the executive branch, right?
Sure.
So it's kind of, it's our version of check and balance, just like at the State House or down in Washington for the city council. So that's, that's what the council does.
Right. So we deal mostly with the special permits, right? So if somebody's coming in, they're talking about zoning, or they, they need to get that special permit, that's typically what comes through our office, you know, and we, we will send them to you guys, and then you guys are the ones that decide really ultimately whether it's a good idea for the city or not a good idea for the city, right?
That's right. We, we look at it from, is it good for public health and safety to promote, you know, what we think is a good idea to move Marlboro forward.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So I know, I know the council doesn't necessarily have priorities, you know, it's not that type of a thing, but is there anything that people can look forward to in the first quarter, you know, what are you guys gonna be up to over the next couple of months?
No, no, I mean, fair question, right? So, we don't, the council doesn't have a set of priorities, right?
Right.
Because if we did, we have to meet and discuss them in an open meeting lots.
Right.
But each councillor has a list of what they would like to get done.
Sure.
In any particular given session, right? So I can give you what my vision for 2024 is, for the items that I think would be important.
And you've been around for some time, so you have an idea of what's coming, what's happening, and...
Well, that's good, yeah, I had to admit, Meredith. But yes, so, so, so things that I, I think I'm looking forward to in 2024, rezoning Donalich Boulevard.
Yep.
So that's, that's...
I share that.
Well, it's a big deal because I, I see that area as the economic engine for the city. And for the mall to not be successful is, is gonna be...
Be not good.
Is not, is not good for the city.
Right.
I mean, I mean, again, I kind of bring everything back to taxes and revenue because that allows us, you know, he who owns...
We're gonna get there, I promise.
He loves it.
He who owns the gold, he'll makes the rules, right? So you, you, it's, it's important to keep the Donalich Boulevard area healthy.
Yeah.
So that would be a zoning change that would come before the council.
And so just so folks that are watching, so we, we had done some work on Donalich Boulevard, we kind of have it teed up where there's some input from folks that have come to the table to say, this is what we'd like to see down there, and that was carried over from last year, and so we're hopeful that it'll come up in the new session, right?
That's correct.
Right.
We, we used MAPC to help craft, we had a series of meetings with the public at the time with residents, both in the Bigelow Street area, as well as Donalich Boulevard, the homeowners, I mean, homeowners, the residential businesses. And we, we took all their input in, and we've come up with a document and basically a zoning change for the Donalich Boulevard area that's now before Urban Affairs, they'll take a look at it, if it's good, we'll go advertise it, we'll have a public hearing, get comments from the residents, they'll go to the planning board, the planning board will weigh in to say, hey, do we think, do they think that's a good idea?
Right.
And then ultimately, we'll vote on it. Because I think you heard in today's, yesterday's news, TGA Fridays?
I heard that last night.
So, so, so that's exactly what we don't want to have happen at the mall, right? So we want to keep them moving in, and it's not just the mall, there's a lot of businesses, we've got Satorius coming down, so we're very excited.
Right.
For, for the changes that are coming down on Donalich Boulevard as well. And again, hockey player, God bless the hockey.
Wait, do you play hockey?
Yeah.
Yeah, shout out about the Worcester Railers game.
Oh, what a great segue.
Is it this Saturday?
This Saturday.
I think we were just talking about this.
January 6th, yeah, Marlboro Nights.
Marlboro Nights.
Mayor Dumas will be dropping the puck. It'll be a really good time.
It's gonna be fun.
Tickets are still available.
And you shoot t-shirts into the...
I'm on the Ice Crew for the Railers, so yes, you will see me working the Railers game, but looking forward to it.
Yeah, all right, so now we digress, but please make sure to get your tickets if you haven't got some yet.
Yes, if you go, it's pinned on, I know the City of Marlboro's Facebook, on our Facebook, you just click on the link and you buy your tickets.
But so hockey, SportsCenter, I mean, that whole area is, it's, it's, it's an engine, as you pointed out, and so, you know, it's important to the mall, it's important to the businesses, it's important to all of them to have, you know, the ability to be flexible when times do get a little tough and they want more uses and they want different things and highest investment, things like that. So we're looking forward to that too, and I think the businesses down there are as well.
So that's one of the, next one on my book is the Open Space Plan.
Yep.
So it's due to be updated every five years, so Priscilla and her team have been working real hard, you're gonna start seeing a lot of information coming out on that here in the first quarter, I'm hoping by mid-year, we've got that out. It kind of sends a roadmap for the open space parcels, because if you've watched some of these zoning changes.
Sure.
You know, what people want to have saved for land and not saved for land for open space, all good ideas, but all cost money, right?
Right.
So being able to have this open space list and prioritize it, I think would be a real asset for the city as well as the council as we see development come in. Because I always say, unless we protect it, it's gonna be developed. Because the homeowner or business owner has the right.
Right.
It is their land, it is zoned to be developed, it's not zoned to be open space.
Right, yeah.
So if you want it as open space.
You gotta communicate that.
Well, you have to buy it.
Yeah.
In order to buy it, you have to pay for a lot of money, so when you pay all the money, that's good.
Yeah.
But there's a trade-off. If I buy all open space and don't have any growth, then my taxes go up.
Yeah.
Because I need, so there's gotta be a balance, and, and people, no one wants anything built in their backyard, and that's okay, then buy the property in your backyard.
And preserve it.
I mean, that's, to preserve it.
Right, right. Well, and I think it's important too, from an economic development standpoint too, to know where are those key spa, where are those, you know, what's, what's the priority for the city, and to make sure that we're actively also preserving that when we're talking developers and, and folks, so that's, that's a good one.
And I think a lot of folks lose track, we have over 3,500 acres of already preserved space, you know, how much is too much?
That's a lot, yeah.
With global warming and all that going on, I mean, you, you, there's gotta be a balance, right? But if you stop growing, that's okay, that's a decision, and that's, that's what they want, that's good, but there's a price for that.
Sure.
Just like there's a price for overdevelopment.
Right.
So to me, that's the balance.
Finding that balance. Gotta find the balance, yeah.
Correct.
Right. Do we have questions?
I did just want to make sure, for anybody watching live right now on YouTube, on Facebook, WMCTT-TV.
Oh, did we forget this part?
We did, that's fine.
Okay.
But you can comment, and we'll be able to integrate that. And so we do have a comment from Modular Concepts LLC. It's great to start the year learning from El Presidente, El Presidente, about how the city council works and about our taxes.
I agree. What a great topic for 2024, first week, you know?
It's excellent, very relevant. Thank you.
Did you have any other priorities you wanted to...
Real quick, just items that, if you want to be aware of what's coming.
Yes.
So we're looking to revamp or renew the RICHES School, so that's $100 million bond.
Okay.
The West Side Fire Station.
Yep.
Mayor Dumas did a nice job articulating right out of the gate what he'd like to do, and set the reality.
Right.
It's not gonna be built. It's not gonna be built in two years.
Sure.
Get the land and get the ground broken, so he really did a nice job with that. All the union contracts are up, so that's gonna be a, a budget issue. Our taxes and the budget, my favorite parts to make sure they're in line and, and folks can afford what's here.
Yeah.
The MBTA housing.
Yep.
So, so setting up that zoning, and so, real short, that's gonna allow certain areas to be built by right.
By right.
And not require the supermajority vote of the city council.
And just so people understand too, that's a big push from the Healy Driscoll administration to, to kind of do that, and, you know, so I think it's interesting that people sometimes don't understand that there are other pressures from outside, it's not just the council that's looking at that, but the state is kind of putting some pressure on cities and towns to do that, and...
Can you explain a little bit more about this for a resident that maybe is, has no idea, no, no background?
I think it started with the Baker administration, they, they...
Housing Choice, I think they called it.
So if you, again, whatever study, you can pick whatever study you'd like, but they're saying we're about a quarter million housing units shy in the state. So they set up this rule that says if you live by MBTA or public transportation lines, whether it be train, bus, trolley, you're gonna be required, there's 175 of those communities, I think, you're required to have zoning that will allow by right building. Because right now in Massachusetts, that kind of building is all done by special permits or town meetings where you gotta get two-thirds, and it's kind of stymied in a lot of cases, the development. And so the, the target is get housing built close to transportation so that folks will live and then jump on public transportation versus jumping a car, go somewhere.
Yeah. I mean, one might argue, how is Marlboro an MBTA community? So, I mean, those are the things that I think officials are, you know, grappling with is we're an adjacent community.
Yeah.
You know, we don't, we do not have a train running through the middle of Marlboro, we also don't have a river, we love both of those things, but, you know, we don't have that, but we do have bus stations that would connect you to the South Borough train station.
We do have the MEDC shuttle bus.
We do have the MEDC shuttle bus, yep. But so it puts a different set of rules and regulations on us that we have to adopt by a certain timeframe, and if you don't, then you're no longer eligible for state grant funding and things, so that's how they kind of get you to, to buy into it.
So we have till the end of 2024 to come up with that plan, and Mayor Vigent did submit a plan that was carried over, Urban Affairs will be looking at that, and the council will be acting on that, or massaging it to have something in place before the end of the year.
So, I'm looking forward to that one too.
Yeah, it's interesting.
It is interesting, there's a lot of factors to a lot of these things that...
So many things you don't think about on your day-to-day, and it's, it's great to know that there are people that...
Are thinking about it.
Yes. And making plans and thinking about, how do all of these, how will this really affect our residents, our city as a whole?
For sure.
Yeah. All right, so do we want to get into taxes?
Oh, looking forward to taxes.
So the big news, and really why we invited you on today, we love having you all the time, but there was really big news at the end of last year, you guys, the city set the tax rate, some of the lowest numbers we've seen in a really long time, lower than anybody else around us, and the tax bill, the average taxpayer was, is gonna be paying less in the coming year, correct?
Yeah, again, the statistical math says the average house, and it just takes the total assessed value, how much money we have to raise, and it comes up with a mathematical number that says the average house will see a reduction of $189 on their tax bill.
That's unheard of. Most communities, the taxes are going up and up and up and up and up, they're, they're not usually going down.
There's nobody around us that has their taxes going down, is a minimum, they're all going up 300 to 500, over 600, and our poor friends in Hopkinton are $4,844 increase in taxes.
What was that?
You should be shocked, yes.
That's right, yes. And almost as much as the average tax bill in Marlboro, I mean, so.
Wow.
But that's, to me, that's why it's important you have an administration and a council that focuses on making sure you can balance what the residents can afford. And my, my goal has always been steady predictable tax adjustments.
Right.
Just so something you can plan on, and we've done a nice job working towards that in the years that I've been on the council.
So, and one, part of our mission statement at MEDC is to stabilize the residential tax rate, I mean, so we're constantly think, there's some real thought about it here in Marlboro to make sure that that happens, it doesn't just happen.
Right.
You know, so there's, there's a lot that goes into it. So can you, I have two questions for you on this one, so the first one is, can you explain to people, how do you set the tax rate? Because I know you guys do it a little differently here in Marlboro, but then also, how did you kind of be, you're like the tax guru up there, how did, how did that happen? You're the tax guru on the council.
From the tax guru, I, I'll credit Mayor Vigent. So he kind of challenged me way back and gave me the assignment of Finance Chair, and Finance are always a passion of mine in finding out how government works, and again, if you, you gotta work at it.
Right.
But I don't look at his work, because to me, it's a hobby.
Yeah.
I had a real job, and I just love the money end of it.
You were a nuclear engineer for many years, right?
For a long time, but that's a...
Yeah, but like, so for us, we're sitting there going, how did you go from that to, you know, the tax guy? I love it, it's awesome.
But it's, you gotta, you gotta like numbers, and you gotta wanna understand, and I'm very inquisitive when it comes to how does it go. So when I try to explain taxes to people, I try to break it down into a very simple A plus B plus C equals D, right? You have your state aid.
Yep.
Plus your local aid, plus your levy, and I'll go through all these in a minute.
Okay, I love it.
It includes the budget, right? So the council goes about, the mayor submits a budget in May, council then acts on it, the budget is then sent. For, I'll just use last year's example, $197 million. So once you set the budget.
You gotta pay for it.
You have to not pay for the budget, okay? So we are, the three primary revenue sources are state aid, which you'll hear on Beacon Hill all the time, hey, was state aid going up?
Chapter 90.
Chapter 90 funds, all that. Marlboro was very fortunate this year, we saw an $8 million increase in our state aid. I do not, and I would, I was not expecting that one, that's one of the primary drivers as to why you've seen a reduction in the...
Why was it so high this year, is any...
School.
Okay.
School aid, because of the, the population mix, we, the formulas were changing and evolving, and it finally caught up, so Marlboro was able to get on the receiving end of some...
That's great.
It is, and we will continue to have that money, but I don't think you're gonna see it at leaps and bounds that you saw last, to me, last year was that one-year spike.
They corrected it.
Which is good.
Yep. It's not something to count on.
I mean, we'll still count on, you know, that, so that was $54 million, so we'll, we'll count on, you know, I'm sure when we start, when the new administration, Mayor Dumas starts billing the books, they're gonna start with $54 million of state aid and then go from there.
Okay.
So that's, that's, that's A.
They're not likely to, to reduce it, but you might get more...
Well, if it does get reduced, so here's, here's the fun part, this is an election year for all the state legislatures, so they're not gonna reduce state aid.
Right.
Because that will just, you know, that...
Crush their chances of getting reelected.
Okay.
If we can get people to run, but, yes, it's not, it's, it's not a good position for the legislators, legislators to be in.
Okay.
So that's A. B is local receipts.
So that's all of us.
So, well, that, that's our, that's all the fees, so that's your water bill, your sewer bill, your excise tax, your marijuana tax, your hotel tax, your meals tax.
Yep.
Building permits, wiring permits, dog licenses, liquor license, all the fees, the city charges that are in the ordinances that the city council sets.
I just got my dog bill last week.
There you go.
Seems really good, he's getting everything out right on time.
So all those, those, the local money, so that's $39 million that we take in on the local side. And so when you take our budget of 197, you subtract the 54 from the state aid, and the 39 from the local receipts, it's what's called the levy, which is what we have to impose upon our residents and commercial folks to pay what's called your tax bill.
So how do you, the 39?
Yep.
Does that change year over year, or is that pretty predictable as well?
It runs, it slowly increases because, you know, rate, water rates, sewer rates go up.
Yeah.
But it typically runs in the order of the 33, 34 million dollars. This year happened with good collections, and shout out to these, Collector's Department, they've done a good job collecting back taxes and bills, so, I mean, again, we send bills, sometimes people don't pay them, but you gotta pay them, and, and so they've been doing a nice job getting the, the funds in.
So it's fairly predictable.
So it's fairly, so that's, that's why, so that's how they build the budget, so when they build a budget in May, they'll predict what they think state aid is, what they think local aid is.
Yep.
The mayor will come down with a budget, typically it's six to eight million dollars increase, all right?
Yep.
So now you go say, okay, now I gotta add those numbers together, and what's, subtract them, and what's left, and someone's gotta pay for it. So that payment comes from the residential and commercial people.
Right.
So in this particular time, we had to raise $104 million for last year's levy or taxes. Go back to 2022, we had to raise $110 million. So, so that, again, reduction of the amount of money we raised translates into the less amount of taxes.
Right.
You still gotta pay taxes.
Sure. Yep, it's not going away.
And, and I always tell, that average $189, you'll get your tax bill, Meredith, it'll be different, I'll get mine, it'll be different, because your house.
The values.
Values are assessed, if things went real good in your neighborhood, your values seemed to go way up, if things kind of stayed the same, they didn't go up as much. The average house went up about 9% in value, which is great.
It's just great.
When you wanna sell your house, which is when you're paying taxes, you, you know, why'd my house go up this much?
Not so great.
Or your neighbor just sold his house for 100 million, you know, $100,000 more than the assessed value.
When he paid for it, right.
Because, you know, the, the housing market is great, because we don't have enough inventory, so the, the problem is the house values get higher, and that's hence why the governor.
Right.
Has the MBTA housing bill in front of us, so.
So can you, so you've got, we're doing A plus B plus C, where does the new growth, how does that all, how does that play into it? Because we're, we've been pretty good, and I actually just looked at the numbers yesterday, and the new growth for 2024 is 3.1, which is up from, I think it was 2.4 last year, but so that's up again this year, which is good as well.
Yeah, so, so that, that, that comes in a couple of forms, primarily driven by personal property, which, when you have the Quests, the folks at the campus, the Raytheon's, Modernas, the Satoris, all, all the big companies, Boston Scientific, they're constantly upgrading their inventory, so their, their imaging systems or tools that they use to build stuff all gets assessed.
Right.
So it gets, that's all considered new growth, along with any new building, so the Green District.
Yep.
Down in, on the west side of town, you know, so that comes on to the tax base now that Phase 1 is complete, right? The Phase 2, 3, and 4, but they're not, Phase 2's under construction, 3 and 4 is in a drawing board, they're not, that's why I tell councils, when you approve a project, you may or may not be here when that project comes online.
Right.
Because you're...
Well, it's a great point, Joe Delano was on the, Joe and Ed, all those folks were there when we were doing Green District.
So shout out to Joe Delano and, and the Urban Affairs team in 2018 and 19 that pulled together a lot of these projects, because we are now seeing the fruits of those labors that are now starting to show up on the city's tax bill.
Right.
But, but again.
But it takes time.
And, and it's hard, because it's emotional at the time, you got some groups for it, some against it, and you're voting for something that I sit there and say, okay, what's in the best interest of the city of Marlboro?
Right.
Not necessarily the handful that are chirping in your ear right now, because if I ask, I put, if I put that test to everyone, no one would want to build anything next to their property.
Ever.
Ever, right?
Right.
So, so, so back, so that's, that's part of your personal growth, so it's all that new inventory that the business, and when you buy your computer at home, it doesn't get taxed like that, but when Boston Scientific buys 5,000 computers for their employees, those all make it because of the dollar threshold, they all get taxed.
Right.
All right, so we see that as new growth, along with new buildings.
And then, man, just an interesting tidbit, manufacturers in Massachusetts are exempt from personal property.
That's correct.
So that's another interesting piece of it too, that we don't, we're not able to collect on some of the things we normally would be able to because of that law in Massachusetts.
So, again, so, so as you say, why do you want companies coming in, so, so those big name companies coming here?
They pay a lot of it.
You sit there and say, well, hey, why'd you give this folks a TIF? Well, again, a TIF does nothing but impact future growth.
Right.
The current taxes are all still being paid. And it's it's that anticipation of the new growth, the new people in town that visit all the new services in our city.
All that personal property.
And then all that personal property that we, I will tell everybody, the city has not lost a dime on a TIF. We they are an extremely valuable tool to attract good companies.
Right.
Moderna, you know, to to Marlboro to to come in and, you know, BJ's.
Right.
Another, I'm trying to think of the recent ones that that have been very successful. So and we've had folks apply for them and then back out, which is okay.
Which is fine. Well, there's there's things, and we talk about these all the time. And it's there's stuff in place to protect the city that if someone leaves or if they don't end up moving forward, you know, there's there's a lot of thought that goes into it. It's not just, you know, willy nilly.
Yeah, but sometimes the public perception is that, well, why? Why is the city giving tax breaks to businesses and not to residents?
But just have to think too of the long term, you know. So once, once the TIF ends, so Satorius just got a five-year TIF. You know, so in five years, we then collect taxes, the full tax, which if they never came, we would never be able to do that. We would only be collecting on the original amount, which we do the whole time.
Exactly. If they leave, say they leave in year one, I've now got a brand new building or a modified building that is now on the tax roll for that higher assessed value. So again, it's it's if you don't work in that space all the time, it's it's a.
It's confusing.
The press doesn't do us any favors by how they how they report on these things. But that's a different story.
That's what we're trying to do our job here, right?
Exactly, that's what podcasts are all about.
So all right, switching gears a little bit. So dual tax rate, single tax rate, can you? What are your thoughts on that? Marlboro is dual, but like, what's the, you know, what's the benefits to each?
So it's it's called a split tax rate, right? So so that means we tax the residents at one rate or the businesses at another rate. Communities around, it varies. Some some have a split tax rate, some tax everybody the same. Marlboro right now has a split tax rate where we charge the residents $10.24 per $1,000 of assessed value and the commercial property $17.67 per assessed value. So that you're allowed by law, it was enacted a while ago. We said, okay, we're gonna hit, we're gonna do split because we wanted to attract businesses. So what that does is that lowers the tax.
Burden.
Impact burden on the residential taxpayers because you're shifting that burden of that split more towards the commercial.
Commercial folks.
Side of the house. And we're we're it's really interesting now because our split rate used to be very high compared to our surrounding community. But all surrounding communities with now a single tax rate. Our commercial rate is right, almost in line with them. So our our commercial folks are really, again, I I use word reaping a benefit. No one thinks a benefit of paying taxes.
Taxes.
But they're getting a very favorable rate to stay in the city of Marlboro.
So my next question for you was going, I mean, why? So if if I'm a commercial, you know, person that's coming in and I want to start a business, I have to pay a higher tax rate than the residents. Why is Marlboro still attractive even though that's the case?
Then that's another good question. So the water and sewer, so again, I'd like to recognize Mayor Stevens, putting that investment into those East and Westerly treatment plants. You've heard me say this on previous podcasts, one of the things I'm most proud of, not a sexy investment, right? But the benefits that Mayor Stevens and that insight or foresight had is, hey, upgrade the treatment plans so you can move your wastewater, connecting all to the MWRA now. So you you have what businesses need, which is water and sewers. So surrounding towns are still on, you know, wells and not sewer systems like you have here.
Right.
Makes it attractive. That combined with, you know, the location is key because you can get to Marl, you can be anywhere from Marlboro, anywhere in less than an hour.
Right.
You've got what I call a building department that has a efficient system of getting permits issued and timely inspections because in the business world, time is money. If you can't get your permit and have some predictability that says, I'm going to get a permit, I'm going to get timely inspection so I can get online as quickly as possible. Businesses won't want to come here because it's, again, time is money for the business person, as it is for the homeowner. You want to build a pool, you want to build a deck and a dish in your house.
You want to get done.
Waiting and you you can't get someone to approve a permit or or come out and inspect it. You know, you're losing your mind. So you know, the Mayor Vigent's administration did a real good job making sure that building department was efficient in moving inspections and permitting in a timely manner.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, and you make a great point too about the water sewer. You're not going to see a Moderna going to a community that's on well. Like, because they just, they can't, they can't operate with that type of system.
Yeah.
And then the amenities too. I mean, we we talk about it all the time, but you know, that's that's what makes Marlboro. You know, the taxes aren't as big of a deal as you think it's going to be. And we've done over the last, with Mayor Vigent, 400 company visits, listening, learning, talking to folks about what's important. And it was never about the taxes. It was always about all the other stuff. It was all the other things that made it, you know, really attractive. So you can't say enough about the services.
Employees to.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I I like to mention to folks and say, well, what advantage or disadvantage of a split tax rate? If if there wasn't a split tax rate, we had a single tax rate in the city of Marlboro, would have been around $12 and change. That would have been about an $1,100 increase in the residential tax bill. All right? So if you say, okay, well, why is why is having all this business here? Well, okay, in this particular year, because it changes year to year. But if you wanted to pay an additional $1,100 to reduce having businesses in your town on a single tax rate, you could.
Right.
Not my choice. I'm sure there's a lot of folks that wouldn't want to do that. And to put the top 10 biggest taxpayers in perspective, all right? So so the top 10 biggest taxpayers, we're talking the Quests, the Boston Scientific, the Raytheon's, the Avalons. They they pay about $13 million of that $104 million levy that I talked about in that A plus B plus C equals D part, right? So if they weren't here.
Right.
All right, that 13 million gets shifted to the residential tax. And well, it gets shifted to both the residential and commercial because you have a split. But that split equates to $56 for every million dollars of assessed value. So you're basically paying, for those who are at home doing math, over $700 you would be adding to the residential tax bill if those top 10 taxpayers to every residential tax bill, $700 if those top 10 taxpayers weren't here in the city. So just to, because I like to put it in perspective, you know, how come you got this? Well, it's it's okay until I says, have that conversation when you take your pen out and you're writing your quarterly tax bill to me and then tell me, you know, then now argue why you should you or should you not have businesses in the city of Marlboro?
I was going to say, talk about not getting reelected. That 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 happens and people are going, you know, they'll be in an uproar. People don't want to see a $700 increase. Unless you're in Hopkinton.
We've been very fortunate in Marlboro. Again, I I can bore you with numbers to death, but just taking the last 10 years, our adjustments have been less than $200 for that average house.
Amazing.
And you and I track all the surrounding communities with their ups and downs.
Can we pull that up? I think we have a chart, right?
If you have, if you have one that you want.
Yeah, yeah.
But but no, no one compares. And then when you put that compared to the services you get in the city of Marlboro compared to the services in other communities, it's 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 not even close.
Right.
So I I'm really excited that, you know, what Marlboro has to offer.
I mean, even we, like, again, free trash pickup, like, that's not the case in every community either. The silly things like that, right?
When we say free trash pickup.
Well, you're paying for it.
That's baked into the money.
Correct.
But you're not, I mean.
You're not paying extra for it.
These folks in Hudson are seeing a, you know, $500 increase in their taxes and have to pay for their trash pickup, right? Along with a lot of our surrounding communities, right? Where there's no sports fees in Marlboro. There's there's none of that.
Right.
And we are extremely fortunate for what you get for your tax dollar.
Right.
Is tremendous here, so, you know.
So I know we we touched on it a little bit, but can we dive a little bit deeper into the? You know, because a lot of times you see folks, oh, well, the average bill's going down $200. But you know, my, the the rate went down, but my bill went up a little bit. And can you explain a little bit more about the values and how that all plays into it?
Sure. So on an annual basis, the assessing department will assess the values of all the all the housing and commercial properties in the city. So last year was called the recertification year where they had to formally go out and do all the properties. And it's all based on previous sales, you know. If so, if you have your house and you added a deck or you added a pool, you added a shed, that increases the value.
The value of your property.
Your property. Your neighbors' houses are selling for $100,000 more than assessed value. That's going to increase the value of your property. So all those assessed values get added up so that the Marlboro, so Marlboro's assessed value is 8.5 million billion, that's with AB dollars, right? So that's that's commercial and residential. Of that, about 6.1 billion is all our homes. The balance, 2.4 billion is all the commercial and industrial property. So that stuff all gets assessed because now now that I know how much my city is worth, you know, I have $104 million I got to raise from my levy that I got to pay. Because that's that's, you know, subtract, take budget, less the state money, less the local money, the levy, so last year was 104 million. I've got to spread that 104 million over that 8.5 billion dollars worth of property. So your property can go up. I I very rarely see assessed values go down. And people will, I'll get it all the time. Hey, if they build this X next to my house, my 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 residential values are going down. Hasn't happened. It it doesn't. It 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 just, and it won't.
Right.
And I and I struggle with how to how to convince people that that's not a legitimate. Now, I'll make the argument if they're going to put a nuclear power plant, which I would disagree next to your house, your values make it. But I go back to the town of Seabrook, New Hampshire, and they basically pay no taxes because.
Because Seabrook pays it all.
Just about everything, right?
Yeah.
But now you argue, do I want to live in Seabrook? I mean, there's a bunch of people that do and that that works.
Sure.
You know, but again, the projects that come in, you know, this this building, this residential complex, the your assessed values rarely go down.
Going to go down.
Right.
Right.
They're going to go up.
Right.
And just because they go up doesn't mean you pay more taxes. It it all is, getting back to the mayor's budget, can we put a, you know, reasonable increase to the budget that we can support from a new growth perspective?
Sure.
And again, steady, stable, predictable adjustments to the tax rate.
Right.
And people understand, you know, hey, if I know I got to assume I'm going to get a 1% hit on my taxes or 2%, something less than $200 on an annual basis. Okay, I mean, I can read you the numbers for all the ones over the last 10 years to really bore you. But $198 was the highest. They went down to as low as a $16 increase and then everywhere in between. But the average over the last 10 years is $131 increase in your taxes.
It's incredible.
No community can touch it.
Yeah. Did we find the chart, the community chart? There we go.
Yep.
All right, so my eyes are old, so I've got to go look at my paper. So what I've listed here is all the the cities and towns surrounding Marlboro.
Yep.
Right, and the town of Sudbury, I don't have their information. I may not even have put them on there. But it kind of gives you the list of how their assessed values of their houses are and more importantly, what their tax rate is and what their taxes are. Because that's, you know, people want to look, businesses come to the community, what what's your tax rate?
Right.
And the tax rate changes every year. So I can have a tax rate of this, you know, we've had it as high as 16, or the residential rate is high as 16, 17 cents. Now it's down to 10.
10.
Now that I say cents, dollars, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But but again, it fluctuates based on budget and assessed value. So it, those are all intertwined. But looking at this table, you'll see Marlboro's taxes went down $189. But now you move on to, you know, Boylston, up 300, same thing with Northboro. The items in blue are the towns or cities with split tax rates. So you can kind of get a sense of what their split tax rates are compared to Marlboro. But, you know, Hudson, we'd like to pick on Hudson because they're our friendly rivalry next door.
Love to do that.
You know, so $500 increase in the average house, you know, Southboro. Okay, well, Southboro's fancier. They got bigger, okay, true, right? Their their average house is almost $800, $900,000, right? But they're seeing a $567 increase in the residential tax bill.
Compared to our $200 decrease.
That is correct. So when you look at all these surroundings, everybody around us that doesn't have a candle to the services that Marlboro has.
Right.
Are seeing increases in taxes and our residents will be seeing a corresponding. In some cases, some some taxes will go up in the city mall. If your property got changed so that it was some enormous amount, you will see an increase. But the average taxpayer is going to see a decrease.
We should be really excited about that. It's exciting, like, that's a big deal. I mean, that's something that everybody's been working hard for for many years. And again, it doesn't happen by chance. It happens because of a lot of smart people that are coming together to make it happen.
So so I'll tell you, so 24 years on the council, this is the first time the tax is going down like this. I mean, you know, as far as working.
Congratulations, that's it's exciting. It should be celebrated.
It's a team effort. It's it's the mayor, the council, the residents paying their bills on time. MEDC bringing businesses into the community. I mean, if you go back to 2010, when Mayor Stevens started, you know, what what does vision look like? And it was that some dopey council had voted against it when we came aside.
Wait, what was? We won't go there.
But that MEDC vision of promoting growth because you're a.
Yep.
A funnel for departments. You know, you hear a lot of chirping in the council, well, we need a plan. We don't need a plan. We have MEDC, we can hire anybody we want, anytime we want and get any planning services we want. You know, MEDC has brought in the bacon to have Marlboro in a financial condition that they are now.
Yeah.
Right?